Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Here.
Meringa.
Here.
Nordhuck.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truce.
Here.
Vanderwoss.
Here.
And Mayor Mas.
Here. Well, tonight for the invocation, we have Pastor Ryan Wieland from Granville United Methodist Church. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand, and we're going to follow that with a pledge of allegiance.
I would invite you to pray with me if you feel so comfortable. Let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for this time together as a community for meeting and conversation. We give thanks for all who live and work here in Granville. We give thanks for the leadership in our community as well, and pray you for discernment and wisdom and grace for each one of them as we share in conversation tonight. As we enter this season of spring, we give thanks for signs of hope and warmth even in the midst of these cold days. We see hope breaking through, and we give thanks for that as well. We pray for our community in this season of spring break at various schools. We pray for those who are traveling. We pray for teachers and school administrators, and for all who enable our youngest citizens to learn and to grow. We pray, oh Lord, that you would help us to grow in understanding of one another, that you would continue to bless our community, and that you would guide us in all that we do and say. We pray for the people throughout this world who are suffering in mind, body, or spirit, and especially we pray for the people of Ukraine and for those on both sides of the war who have lost loved ones in this conflict. We pray for peace in this world and peace in our hearts as we gather in this time of meeting. We pray all these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being with us, Pastor. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Well, you have your agenda in front of you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Support, motion support, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. We also have a couple sets of minutes. The first one was our last regular meeting for March 14. Had a chance to take a look at those. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Support. And support. Any additions, corrections? Anything anybody wants to point out in there? Not all those in favor of approving the minutes from the regular March 14 meeting? Please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no. Then we also have minutes from the meeting that I was not at. So JR, thank you for running that meeting. That was the budget work session on March 21, just last week. Had a chance to take a look at those minutes. Anything, any additions, corrections? Anything anybody wants to point out? Do we have a motion on that yet or not? Motion to approve?
Some move.
Motion, support, and support. Great. All right, all those in favor of approving those minutes from the budget work session, March 21? Please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposition, please say no.
Can you turn it up a little bit here? I can't hear nothing.
Okay. Let's see.
Can you turn it up a little bit?
I don't know whether we've got... I can talk a little bit louder. There you go. All right. Next, we have presentation of the bills tonight in the amount of $400,191.91. Ken, anything you'd like to point out in those bills before we open it up for questions?
Sure. The largest on there is related to the monthly health insurance bill for the city's employees. But that's a regular you're used to seeing. So a couple that I pointed out or called out for council attention, actually, all of them are on page seven of the list. Vice Electric, $48,160. That was the final billing related to the new controls of the pump at the Clean Water Plant. That project is done, it's operational, and that'll be the final billing there. City of Wyoming, our provider of water for wholesale purposes that we distribute to the citizens, $79,083 for the month of February. And then there was a smaller bill, $11,000, that I highlighted on page seven from Vanac Autobody. That's related to a police cruiser that I think it got hit not once but twice, yeah, in the winter. And that'll be covered except for deductible by the insurance. But I think that we're good there, Chief, now it's okay. And other than that, simply be happy to answer any questions council might have or anything I missed.
Great. Any questions for Ken on any of the bills tonight? Not is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $400,191.91?
Some move.
Motion and support. Any other comments? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Meringa.
Yes.
Nordhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwoss.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. First item on, we have a presentation regarding our stormwater permit ordinance from Cara Decker from Algro. So welcome.
Thank you. My name is Cara Decker. I work for Gran Valley Metro Council, and I am an environmental engineer, and I serve the city in a consultant capacity to ensure your compliance with your municipal stormwater permit. So the city was first issued a stormwater permit in 2003, but more recently was reissued a permit December 1st of last year. So I'm here tonight to give you an update to your stormwater program and some specific updates based on that new permit. So through Metro Council, we also run the Lower Grand River Organization of Watersheds, which is a mouthful, so we call it Algro for short. And we do a lot of education and outreach about the Grand River, specifically about stormwater, because when it rains or when snow melts in our city, all of that water ends up going into a storm drain. And then it goes through our stormwater infrastructure, and then it ends up right in Buck Creek or the Grand River. It doesn't go to the Clean Water Plant first, which means that there are some special rules and regulations that we have to follow to make sure that that water isn't polluted and that our natural water resources are staying healthy. So besides what we do at the city through our work as a municipality, we also encourage residents... I'm glad there are so many of you here today. We encourage you all to pick up your pet waste, because we don't want any of that bacteria in your dog poop to end up in our local waterways. Or if you have a vehicle that's leaking some sort of fluid, rainwater and that runoff could pick that up, and then it could end up right in Buck Creek or the Grand River. We do a lot of other programs at Algro, some really cool projects. A lot of it's grant-funded. Most recently, in Granville, we have planted some trees with the Granville Tree Board. We've been involved with the rain garden at the middle school. And I love getting together and getting outside with teachers and getting students actually in the water and getting their hands dirty. So check out our website, lgrow.org. Some other cool projects are happening. But as far as stormwater regulations go, I had mentioned that the city has a stormwater permit, and you have one because you own and operate your own separate storm sewer system, or MS4 for short. So these regulations are coming down from the federal level, from the Clean Water Act. And then locally, they are enforced by the Michigan Department of Great Lakes Environment and Energy, or Eagle for short. So the permit and your stormwater program, there are a lot of things happening with that, all of which Metro Council manages for you. I already touched on the public education and outreach piece, but a lot of this also falls on the DPW. So I just want to give a huge shout out to Charlie and his crew, because they're doing amazing work, and you guys are really lucky. A lot of people don't think about stormwater infrastructure until it's too late and there's a problem. And these guys are making sure that your system's running great. So while Granville is special and unique, you guys are not alone in having to follow these stormwater regulations. This map shows all of the communities in our area that have stormwater permits and are following the same standards that the city of Granville is. So this is also important, because the messaging that people are receiving about their water and their watershed is the same whether it's here in Granville or it's out at the mouth of the Grand River at Lake Michigan in Grand Haven. Granville Public Schools is also nested under your stormwater permit, so that means that everything that we have to follow as a municipality, the schools also have to enforce on their properties. And you guys are also really lucky there, too, because the operations guys at Granville Public Schools are amazing to work with. All right, so I mentioned that you received a new permit, December 1st. It expires October of next year. And there are two main updates with that permit. So there's this water quality piece we're going to touch on, and then there are also some changes to the development and redevelopment standards as far as stormwater goes. So in our area, there are some impaired waterways that the state has said, hey, there's too much of a certain pollutant in these streams, and that stream no longer meets its designated use. So a designated use would be something like a cold water trout stream, so Buck Creek. And you'll notice that Buck Creek has an impairment for E. coli, as does the Grand River. So the state has said, hey, at certain times of the year, there's too much E. coli or too much of that pollutant in those waterways. And so we, as the city of Granville, need to do something about that. And what we're going to do is Algro has a plan to do some monitoring, and that monitoring's going to start this summer. As far as development and redevelopment goes, all of you as a city council need to adopt a new stormwater ordinance to be in compliance with this new permit. And I'm going to get into that in just a second. But if you're interested in reading all of the stormwater documents that go along with this permit, they're on Algro's website. Some really light bedtime reading material if you need something later. But what we're doing is we're updating your city standards to what the county is already following. So the county has been following these standards since January 1st of 2020. So what this means is that when a developer, you know, presents planning commission with a development, more likely than not, they're probably adding some sort of hard, impervious surface to our environment, whether it be a parking lot or a building. And then when it rains or when we have a storm, that means that there's extra water that has to leave that property. It has to go somewhere. And we need to make sure that that extra stormwater is treated and that we're going to try to infiltrate as much of it as possible on site. So the state has said that we have to meet certain water quality standards, and then we have this channel protection or this water quantity. So we don't want to send a giant slug of water downstream, because it will degrade downstream habitat. We are not changing your flood control standards, and the new standards apply to any developments of one acre or greater in size. And that includes linear road projects or like bike path projects. There's also going to be some increased oversight on private stormwater facilities, which is a really good thing, because if a developer comes in and they install some sort of stormwater infrastructure, they are going to be in charge of that in perpetuity, so for forever. And if the city has to go back and perform maintenance on that for that developer, then the city can charge that developer for that work. So what this looks like in practice is moving away from some of our traditional engineering designs or moving away from that, like, stormwater retention basin and moving towards something that looks more green. We're going to use something called green infrastructure practices, where we're going to treat and infiltrate that water on site. So the plan is hopefully we will see more things like rain gardens and bio swales, permeable pavement, things like that, in order to treat that stormwater on site. And what it's going to look like is something that's literally more green. So instead of having your traditional parking, asphalt parking lot, we'll have something that looks a little bit more green to have those plants soak up that water. That bottom picture there is a development that has the same square footage on both sides and the same number of parking spots. It's just arranged a little bit differently in order to treat that stormwater runoff. So what this means for all of you is that in the future here, we're going to have to repeal and replace chapter 26 of the city code. So that's your current stormwater standards, and they're going to be updated. And so the changes are really going to be in the performance design standards. The rest of it is pretty much the same. Like I said, the county has already been following these standards, and all of the other communities in our area have either adopted the new ordinance or are in the process, just like you guys are doing that. This model ordinance or the new ordinance has been vetted by the state. It's been worked on by members of Algro for many, many years. And I know, you haven't seen it yet, but you'll see it in your next board packet. That's all I have, but I would love to entertain any questions that you have.
Questions for Cara? JR?
When was the last revision to that ordinance for municipalities?
2003. And I don't know exactly when the city of Granville adopted your current stormwater standards.
No problem. It's every so many decades, per se.
Yeah, it's been at least since 2003 or 2004. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So kind of piggybacking on that, is there a deadline that that new ordinance needs to be adopted by?
Yes, June 1st.
Of this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Comments, questions? Great, thanks for a good presentation. And thanks for all the good things that you do here in our city, especially like the middle school rain garden and your cooperation with Friends of Buck Creek.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And I just, I want to thank all of you for being leaders in the watershed and wanting to protect your water resources. It says a lot about all of you and about your community. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, time for public comment. Anybody like to address the council? Just come on up to the podium, give us your name and address, and tell us what you're thinking about tonight.
All right, thank you very much for letting me be here tonight. I, my name is Wayne Lawrence. I'm a resident here in the community, and I'm a member of Premier Athletic and Tennis Club. You guys have probably already heard from several of our members in the past few weeks, but I want to just kind of give you an update as to where things stand with what we're doing at the club. There was a meeting recently, and out of that meeting, that meeting was held to address how to keep the club alive, how to keep the club open, how to save it from demolition. So one of the things that's come of that is we've elected a committee to advance one particular avenue of saving the club, and that is through a 501(c)(3). And so we're approaching that at this point, and we're organizing for that. We're meeting with the ownership to discuss that possibility as well as pursuing that through legal counsel as well as our attorneys. There are 500, more than 500 members of Premier that most of them feel strongly that they would like to keep the club alive, keep the club as a club. There are almost 50 years of tennis tradition right here in Granville. I don't know if any of you are aware of this, but the USTA, the U.S. Tennis Association, adult leagues, adult teams, a full 25%, sorry, 24% of all of the teams on West Michigan are based right here in Granville at Premier. So of the 130-some teams that there are, again, 24% of them come right from this club. And this club is, in two months, slated to be closed and demolished for reasons that are profit-driven. Not that there's anything wrong with profit, we appreciate that. We appreciate the need for a healthy tax base, but we also understand that a healthy body, a healthy social atmosphere, and a healthy community are also important to the quality of life that we all agree is important here in Granville. So again, what I'm doing today is I'm representing this committee that is pursuing the 501(c)(3) option to keep the club alive. And one of the things that I've been tasked with is to reach out to this organization to ask for your help, your guidance, and any type of funding that may eventually become available. We're open to having city park status. We're open to providing a number of different services to the community as well as a charitable organization. So again, we're very positive that this is an avenue that can be successful. It's going to take a lot of work. It's going to take a lot of support, and it's going to take just a lot of passion from a lot of people. But we think we have it, and we'd really like your support. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Wayne, for your comments and your update. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Anybody else like to address the council? Just come on up, tell us what you're thinking about this evening. Welcome.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Barb Friedman. I've been affiliated with Premier Tennis and Health Club since mid-'90s, both as an employee and as a member. And just to reiterate, I can't top what Wayne just said. There's a whole bunch of us here coming to Ramblewood or Premier. For so many of us, it's the very, very best part of our day. It's such an important part of our community. We need to do everything we can to save it, and we really appreciate any support, any advice, any help that you all can give us. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment, Barb. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Kyla, welcome.
Kyla Woss with 3273 Fayette in Granville. And I'm coming tonight to just basically, we wrote a recommendation from the tree board. And what our recommendation is, we would like the city council to make an exception when they review the permits and make an exception for the permit that people will apply for to plant a tree between the street and the sidewalk, the tree right-of-way. And we have, it was approved a long time ago, and then some changing of people. It didn't all come into play. So we have the approved tree list that you approved a few years ago, and we've revised the permit a little bit. So it's just clearer and it's more defined. And what we're basically asking for an exception, that there's not a fee charged for this permit. We feel that if people are not charged an additional fee to plant a tree between the street and the sidewalk, they would be more inclined to come and get that permit. And once a tree's planted, I've noticed a couple trees that were planted incorrectly. There's like full-size maple trees planted under wires on Prairie. Well, it's planted in the cities right-of-way, and so if they have to remove them, it can incur some cost. We removed Bradford pears from the approved tree list, because it's pretty much nationwide now that people are not planting that tree for various reasons. But one of the biggest reasons is they're very heavy-wooded at the top, and as they mature, there's so much wood and not enough strength to hold it that windstorms split them. And so then it causes a risk, and it has to be removed. They're also evasive. They were thought to be a tree that was sterile, that didn't, the seeds didn't go anywhere. But it's very evasive, and so they've recommended everywhere that, pretty much, that we don't plant it. But when a homeowner runs down to Lowe's or Home Depot and grabs a tree, they're still for sale, and they still can be planted between the sidewalk and the street. So what we're hoping to do with this permit is to educate people, to get them to use trees off the approved tree list, to plant the right tree in the right place, so that if there's overhead wires that we're not planting a tree that's going to be 30 or 40 feet, and you see the big V in it or whatever, and consumers is constantly coming through having to prune it, I think it's not real cost-effective to drive through the city and monitor to see if anybody planted a tree, but it would be a benefit to the city to not have trees that shouldn't be planted in that right-of-way. And so that we're just asking that we can encourage people to go apply for that permit without a fee being charged. And so the only thing I'm really asking is that when you review things, when you go through the permits and the fee schedules and things, that you look at that as well.
Any questions?
Questions for Kyla, JR? What is that fee-permit price? Do you know?
It was 25. I don't, I don't know what it is right now. But if somebody's planting a tree that doesn't even go on property they own, it's kind of inhibitive for them to want to come and apply.
We'll break along with the budget approval process. We typically look at that one time a year, our fees. And we'll look at this one, the right-of-way charge isn't just for tree planting. It's for all work in the right-of-way. So we'll consider where that, where that falls. And this recommendation would be reflected with any other fee changes that might become for you guys to consider. But we'll have to write it specifically to be an exemption to tree planting.
Sure.
And we'll let you know more specifics about that in May.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Kyla.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the council? Come on up to the podium. Tell us what you're thinking about. Yes, sir. Hi, welcome.
I still couldn't hear nothing.
I'll fill you in later.
I'm not out of the womb. I'm 79 years old. I will be in a couple of months. So I've worked in a factory my whole life around loud equipment, motors, whining, et cetera. So that's why I got a little hearing impairment. I just didn't want to make a scene and think, oh, who do you think you are? Okay? So anyway, I'm here on behalf of Ramblewood Complex. And talking about it, and we ask a couple questions. And please, nobody answer a question like, it's private property, and they can do as they darn well please. We understand that. But isn't this a typical example, that big money coming in our community and literally kicking the little guy to the curb? That organization has been there since the '70s. I know guys that still go there today, and they're in their '90s. It's a place where it's a community. It's great. It isn't just for tennis players and an elite. Everybody from every income goes there, from doctors, lawyers, their wives, tennis players, guys that work out in the gym. We don't have weightlifters like power lift that are at 100 pounds in each hand. So it's a community type of an organization. And the fact that they plan on closing this thing, well, the 27th of June, is it, Barb?
May.
May? We're devastated. We're, I can't put it into words how we all feel. Now, there's a lot of money floating around in this community. At one time, per capita, Kent County had more millionaires than any other in and around our area or in the United States, I heard. This is some time back. Lots of money is floating around from the administration, who's been putting this money out. The schools are really well-loaded. There's money out there. And I can't believe that out of all you people here, you don't know some person, organization, or somebody that would have something there to help our community. For instance, I go past Jensen just today. They're putting up a field house. A field house, as good as anything in the country. You can have a baseball game in there. You go out to Byron Center. What do they got out there? They got a community center, with a little place for the seniors to sit down and talk, which, you know, when you get to be a senior, that's very important. Because if they don't have that situation where you can talk to somebody, it's not good. What do we have? Far as I know, we don't have anything. Where's our community center? Where's a little place where we can gather around and talk? I don't know of anything. I think even Wyoming has a little something. So I guess I'm asking, whoever represents that little area in Ramblewood, would somebody please try to help the little guy? Talk to somebody, know if there's some funding out there, and see what you can do to help us as a community? Not just a few individuals that think they have money, but for everybody. Thank you.
Good, thanks for your comments.
We never got his name.
What is your name?
Yeah. He just said Chris Henske.
Do you live in Granville? Yes. Okay.
You said you were from Ramblewood when you introduced yourself, so I thought you were from Ramblewood. I mean, you were...
No, no, no. I live in Granville, in the community right here. And I've been going there for 30 years. It'll be my 30th year this year.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the comments. Anybody else tonight like to address the council? Last chance? Okay. Yeah, Ken?
Mr. Lawrence, was it? Just a question. You mentioned a committee that was specifically looking at 501(c)(3) status.
Correct, yes. That committee was just elected today.
Okay. Are there other avenues being pursued besides 501(c)(3)?
There are, there are some. There is a, there is a gentleman who is pursuing something like that with private individuals. That is, he's under non-disclosure agreement with the owner of the Peak Management, the owner of the facility. So he is limited as to what he can say about that. So I'm limited as to what I know about that. But that is something that is being pursued. I've been told that he is not participating in our committee, because he doesn't want there to be a conflict of interest between his organizing that portion of it and our organizing what we're planning to do. But the answer is, he doesn't think that it has a high percentage of chance of succeeding. So we are definitely pursuing what we're doing as a, at the same time. So we're also pursuing that. I don't know if that answers the question.
Yeah, I just, I guess I want to make sure that it's not a single...
Yeah, I just, I guess I want to make sure that, that it's not a single effort being made. Maybe limited investors, maybe reaching out to, there's been talk of community centers in other locations. Some of those fitness centers are, are school-based, not city-based.
Right.
The university, I know, uses the facility heavily, you know? So I'm just hoping that there's maybe more than one avenue that's being pursued.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's one of the things that was decided upon in our, in our meeting with this, with this, this committee, is to, number one, get the, the ear of the owner. If the owner won't listen to us, then we've got to think about what are we really doing? So that's one of the things that we're doing, is reaching out to the ownership to say, this is one of the avenues that we're pursuing. So we're legitimizing it in that way to, to get that, you know, at least that tacit approval that, yeah, we'll listen. We've been told that the ownership is amenable to an offer and that we, we have been, there are people that are being approached with that. Now, there is some reticence to approach those people because of certain securities issues with soliciting, soliciting funds for ownership and things like that, which are above my pay grade. So trust me, I don't understand all of it. I'm just a guy that loves to play tennis and I, most of my friends are members of this club. So it's a great big social group for me that is very important to me. So that's why we're pursuing this. And again, I hope I'm answering the question that, that is in a helpful way.
I think so.
Good. All right. Other questions at all? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other public comment? Yes, sir. Mr. Raymond Schneider, welcome.
I do. I'm Kurt Raymond Schneider. I live at three-three-seven-eight Paiute Court. Moved here to Granville in nineteen-seventy-three and started my business in nineteen-eighty-one on Remaco in Granville. And I've been a member of Ramblewood for a long time. And I'd just like to say I support these people. And it's going to be a very big financial challenge to make a health facility profitable, whether it's a 501(c)(3) or whatever. So, but it's a great facility for the city and for all the people that live here. We have a lot of people that come in from outside the city and play at the, at the club. A lot of people that use the other restaurants and other things in the area while they're here. I know when I have customers in, I'll take them to Ramblewood and we'll play tennis there. They enjoy doing that. So there's a lot more going on. It's going to be a very, and I don't have the numbers, I'm not part of any committee. I'm just here listening. But I know the numbers are going to be very challenging for making it profitable. It's kind of like bowling alleys and golf courses and everything else. I've seen a lot of the kids play video games and other things and devote their time to it. I'll tell you, you'll see a tremendous amount of children, kids, teens, playing tennis at Ramblewood. And I think that's what we want to grow up in, in this area. And having been here a long time, I do really appreciate the Ramblewood facility, the premier facility. And I do appreciate everything that's going on there. And I just would like to throw in my support and see if there's anything that can be done. That's it.
Appreciate it. Thanks for the comment.
I'm Nancy Carlson. I live on Rivervale Drive. And I retired four years ago. I was a nurse for forty years. And I needed something to do. I needed something to replace all my nurse friends. And I started going to Ramblewood to the senior exercises. What a tremendous opportunity for the people that go there. We have people from sixties to nineties. And all kinds of opportunities to do things. Now they started having game days and just things to help people because they're just having such a hard time because of the isolation of COVID. And there's just so many of all ages that really benefit. It's much more than just tennis. So I hope that something can be done. Thanks.
Thanks. Appreciate the comments. Appreciate, I've just been impressed. I'm sure the rest of the council has just the passion people have for this place. Obviously, yeah, it's obvious. Anybody else like to address the council? Okay, if not, next item on the agenda is downtown social districts.
Yeah, let's see. I started off, I see Teresa's here, is Heather here? Yes. Oh, Heather Stuck, okay. Social districts are a creation of state legislation that was passed a couple of years ago. I think generally initially in response to the COVID pandemic. And at the time, restrictions on where people could go and how many could gather. And a lot of restaurants struggling. There was some creativity applied that would allow restaurants to operate on sidewalks. And, you know, you've seen everything from the inflatable igloos to outdoor heaters and that kind of thing. But one of the extensions was something called a social district. And it was created for a specific set of time under state law, although there is talk now about extending that and making it permanent. And many communities have taken advantage of this. The general concept is that a city council can take action by resolution to create a social district and a boundary and a set of rules, including hours of operation and days of operation. And that would allow liquor-licensed establishments within that district boundary to, to serve alcohol to patrons who would not be required to consume it on-site, which is the current law, or the law without a social district. Instead, it creates a possibility of folks taking beverages they purchase from a licensed alcohol-serving establishment into a commons area that is also designated on a map and would allow consumption within those boundaries. And we gave a number of examples on maps from various communities in your packet. You can see how several have implemented this already. I think there's eighty or ninety across the state, if I remember the number right. So it's a benefit to the liquor-licensed establishments, but it's also one of these community-building type efforts as well. And Teresa Mendering is here, our downtown development coordinator, who works on behalf of the DDA to strengthen our downtown district. And we, through Teresa, as a DDA and as a city sponsor, a number of events per year, the Vintage Festival, Christmas Downtown, summertime family nights, and we just finished an event, I say we, Teresa just finished an event Friday, which was the annual Easter egg, adult Easter egg hunt. These are the kinds of things that you can envision as we, especially as we closed down Chicago Drive for a couple of these events. Folks being able to go into what currently are two licensed establishments downtown that are operating, Michigan Moonshine and Osgood Brewing. There's also a space that's occupied by the former Chicago Drive pub that has a license, but that business is not operating currently. So, but there are three licenses down there. And so the possibility exists to, to be able to better serve our attendees at those events and to support our businesses by allowing people to, to purchase beverages and to take them out onto Chicago Drive, for example, the Vintage Festival. That becomes pretty apparent when you see the lineup at the door at the distillery or at the brewing company, folks trying to get in to get a seat and can't do it because they're full. So this came up through some of our local business owners as something that they were interested in. And they brought it to the chamber and to Teresa. Quite a bit of research has been done, as you can probably see from the documents that have been assembled, to try to figure out how we might administer something like this in Granville if the council was amenable to the idea. We thought tonight this would be, you know, the first real exposure. Council's had a little bit of paperwork previously, but this would be a good time to discuss council's interest in that, to hear the business owner's interest in how they see this working, to consider if you are interested in taking this to the next step, you know, what kind of boundaries we might generate for a social district, district and commons area in Granville. One thing to note in particular is that we'll be finishing up work this June on the new downtown pavilion. A real nice structure. It's going to house a farmer's market one day a week, but it's there seven days a week. And some of the events that happen downtown will happen in that space. And that would be an ideal kind of feature for a commons area where people would be able to use that facility in conjunction with the permission that comes with social districts. So this is the right time to ask questions and to understand, you know, the ins and the outs of how it could work. We would not be asking council for anything more than continued interest at this point if you have it. If not, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to go through all the next steps of developing resolutions and a set of guidelines and rules to go with it. But if you are interested, we would take immediate steps to try to get those things put together in the hope of returning in a couple of weeks with an actual resolution. Because if this is going to go forward, it would be ideal to get this going at the beginning of the summer warm season, when some of these events start to take place. So, and there is a process here, I think I might have mentioned at the beginning. We recommend this, but the Michigan Liquor Control Commission is the body that ultimately has to approve how this works. So there's a, there's a timeframe involved with anything that has the state of Michigan name on it. It's just a, it's a step that has to be crossed and takes time to do that. So with that as introduction, I don't know, Teresa, did you want to address the council in any way in this, or just have some of the, the business folks involved?
I think, do I go up there?
Yeah, please.
Sure, as Teresa's coming up. For those of you who don't know who Teresa is, this is Teresa Mendering. She's our downtown development authority event planner. So if you've ever been to any of the events downtown Granville, had a lot of fun, Teresa's the one who is in charge of all those. So welcome, Teresa.
Thank you.
Just before you start, I know that when I've been at some of the events, I've heard people talk about this, like, oh, I wish I could just walk around with something that came from Michigan Moonshine. And just wondering if you've heard about, heard those comments.
Yeah. So I've been in this for, I believe, eight years now. And so the streetscape was done before I started, but then I was hired to help raise awareness and to help revive the downtown. So first off, like, I've walked this journey with these business owners for eight years and then Jay for a couple of years, as he started kind of right before COVID hit. So I've been part of the whole new structured pavilion. And I think what I love about this idea is, let's say in June, we have the music, food and fun series, which will take place in the library amphitheater. We'll have food trucks, we'll have things for the kids to do. City council's going to be involved in that. We'll be bringing hundreds of people down here, but because they're on this side, there's really no reason if we have food trucks over here and the music and the activities for them to visit Osgood Brewing or Michigan Moonshine. If you adopt something like this, then somebody can send someone over, they can get two adult beverages, they can come back, enjoy the music. So all of a sudden, those three Thursday nights, our two liquor-licensed establishments down here are benefiting from what we're doing, which is the whole point. The structure was meant to connect the library to the downtown businesses and back and forth. This would allow that. We've spoken with Josh at the library and their general manager as well. And they would like to see this go every Thursday night through the summer. So the summer music series is the first three Thursdays in June. Then it transfers to the library programming for the rest of the Thursdays until mid-August. So it would be a really good opportunity every Thursday in the summer for these businesses to be able to capitalize on that and to do, I think, what the intent of this entire project was, to connect the two, to bring people down here and to let them be out enjoying. And Ron, Dunning and Jason Smith are just phenomenal to work with. They care about our downtown. They're invested. And especially Vintage Fest or Christmas, the amount of money they could make over those weekends would increase substantially. They're limited right now by how many people they can fit in their building. But somebody could easily walk down the street with a beverage, enjoy Brenna, enjoy the car show, enjoy the beyond. So I see the need. I think that it could work really well. That's all.
Great. Thank you. Jason, you want to?
So Jason Smith, I am one of the tuners of Michigan Moonshine Distillery. First of all and foremost, even though she's going to hate it, if anyone doesn't know the amazing work that she does for this community, we need to acknowledge that because she has a heart as big as it's possible. And the fact that she supports a business that, if you guys remember, four years ago, I was standing in front of you. You were kind enough to allow me to open a business. And then somehow a pandemic struck exactly one year after I started. I would not exist if, if it were not for people like that in the community. So I get a little, I get a little teary-eyed about that. When it comes to the social district, we, we only have a staff of about fifteen people. Like I said, there's a couple of owners, a couple owners' wives. We do actually employ quite a few folks from the University of Grand Valley that come down and work. I could not tell you how many folks have asked us repeatedly, hey, can I take this and walk down the street? And of course, we're not trying to be police agencies, but no, we absolutely, well, no, we, we have an outdoor patio. They love the outdoor patio. We put heaters out there. We try and welcome them in. We've had live music out there and it's a, it's a great event. But when the kids are playing down the road and, you know, there's crafts and there's different things that they want to do, those folks want to get up and walk on down the road. I know there, there may be some, maybe some concern about overconsumption. I would like to say that in the three years that we've been in this establishment, I've never once seen overconsumption exist on our property. Our folks are all trained, there is a requirement to work for us, that they're trained in the ability to understand how to serve, what to serve and how much to serve. And at the same time, if you're taking one beverage and going for a mile walk, I'm not really concerned about you being overserved. That's definitely something. Now, the other thing to think about is we have this, this beautiful farmer's market area. And I want to tell you, last year, there was a Fall Fest. That's one of the events that Teresa sponsors. It downpoured rain. I'm going to tell you guys, it was absolutely just the worst downpour. We were all huddled under tents. We had all these little canopies and pop-ups. There was a, a certain permit that was needed to be able to section off where alcohol could be served. People from the community showed up. I mean, there was over two hundred people in downpour rain. I don't know if any of you were there, but I was blown away. And that speaks to the events that Teresa puts down and the, the community that wants to take part. And an ordinance like this would just expand upon that. Every time the Vintage Fest happens, every time the Fall Fest happens, when the Christmas Parade happens, people come out in droves regardless of weather, regardless of, of what's going on, because they love the community. And I will tell you, as a business owner in the community, again, we don't exist without the community. So anything I can do to support something that they want, I want to pull my full support behind that and let you know, we get people almost daily that ask us if there's progress or if this is even a possibility. So thank you for, for allowing me to exist within the community. I hope to be an establishment that you can be proud of. And definitely, we want to throw a full support into everything that Teresa does. And I think that the social districts could be a wonderful thing for the community as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So council, what are your thoughts? Do we proceed on this?
This is fantastic. You know, when Chicago Drive was redone X years ago, before social districts were a thing, I thought, boy, this could be something we could, we could do. Since that street's been redone, there have been multiple pop-up retail locations, rejuvenation of that street. I cannot imagine that this would only help encourage that future expansion. I mean, I've, I've been to Holland, I've been to Zeeland, and the maps show, I mean, Holland has nine people with several pending that would like to be part of the social district. If Holland and Zeeland can do it, why can't Granville, right? I'm in full support of this. I would love for these boundaries to be very loose with the contingency that as we proceed with expansion, new restaurants, new establishments come in, we can kind of play with those, those boundaries a little bit. But this is fantastic and it speaks volumes to both the owners of these and Ron too. I know he's not here. And obviously speaks volume to Teresa and her planning events and growth that she's contributed to this community, so.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, I would share, councilman, the Vanderwall's enthusiasm. I've also enjoyed the, the social districts in Grand Rapids and Holland and a few other places, Kalamazoo, Lansing, yeah. Yeah, it's time. I mean, it's, it's, our downtown is very well-suited to this. I have no doubt that it'll be very successful.
Yeah. I like the idea too. I think it's great. And I, I kind of, I like even the, you know, it's not Suttonston yet, obviously, but I like kind of the proposed areas too, including the library amphitheater. The furniture is there, it just seems great. And it will only, I think, enhance, you know, the millions of dollars that we've invested.
Right.
The city's invested in downtown, so.
What I love about this map too, is that Michigan Moonshine is still a piece of grass. Which is fantastic.
Right there. Fair enough.
Thoughts? Come this way. Josh?
Yeah, so I knew that we were going to talk about this and was at Michigan Municipal League Conference a couple of weeks ago and had a chance to have a, a walk and a chat with with Mayor Kleinstrop from Zeeland as we were walking from MML over to the Lansing Center. And I asked him about this, how it goes, how does it work, that sort of thing. And it sounds like it works very well in Zeeland. Problem they have right now is you have to have two licensed businesses that are part of it, and one of them went out of business. So they're down to one right now and they can't reopen or restart the social district until they get a second licensed establishment in downtown. But for the time that they were able to do it, it worked very well and seemed to be very well received by the community, so.
I'm also in favor of looking at this and trying to figure out how to make this work. I guess a couple of questions that I have that maybe we need to think about or chew on a little bit. I saw that we had the, kind of the guidelines for Zeeland, I thought those were well done. I thought those would probably work very well for us. It's kind of on the, the back page of one of the sheets that was in the packet. But I guess just questions, is this something that would be open for like a season, like from, you know, X date to X date and then kind of throughout that period, is it something we turn on for certain events, certain weekends when there are things going on that are kind of already being planned? And I don't know what the answers are or how this exactly works. Is it possible for someone to come in with like a temporary license with like a mobile bar or mobile establishment or something and participate in that, or does it have to be the brick and mortar, you know, organizations that are, that are part of it? I don't know. I think that they have to be the established brick and mortar businesses that are part of this, I'm not sure. But it's something to, I guess, think about. I don't know how flexible this is. And then I guess I had a couple of questions. I know that the district here is just sort of a proposed, but just a couple of things that I noticed about it and maybe we can tweak it a little bit. I'm noticing that there is not a contiguous sidewalk connecting Michigan Moonshine along Wilson there to the other district on the other side. So I don't know if we do want to connect that there, because you can be on the one side of the building and it's okay, and the other side you can't. And then I also noticed on Michigan Moonshine, you can go out the front door, but you can't go out the back door. And I don't know if that's because that's a private parking lot back there or if that's a public parking lot, but I would, I don't know why we wouldn't include that parking lot behind their property and then the sidewalk around the corner too as part of that. And then I wondered how Metis Kyperdigraft feel about maybe this extending down their end? It's kind of a dead end there, and I don't know if there would be sensitivity to funerals and stuff going on there, if people were walking around with, with drinks on the sidewalk. I guess I just maybe want to see if we could ask them what their thoughts were. Maybe we would cut that off at Washington instead of extending it down there. Just would want to be sensitive to, to activity going at the funeral home.
Yeah.
Depending on when this was activated or whatever. So just a couple of thoughts there. But I like the idea, I think it's something that could really be a good thing and could work well. And, you know, kind of like JR said, if it can work in Zeeland or Holland, you know, also very, you know, conservative areas, I think it would work well here too with the right guidelines in place. And we've got a couple of great businesses that are willing to sponsor it, and we have a wonderful events coordinator that's done wonderful events for us. So I think we've got a good recipe for success.
Let me answer Josh's questions or go to Randy first or whatever?
Ah, Josh's questions first, I guess.
Okay. All right. There's not necessarily specific answers to all of them because this was kind of predicated on the council being interested in doing it.
Right, I just kind of throw it out there, it's tough to consider.
And the map that we shared with council was kind of a generalized idea of what maybe a commons area would look like. The commons area by the law can't include the actual location of the licensed establishments, they have to be adjacent to it, but not within it. We didn't draw a social district boundary per se to this point. This is probably the first idea of a commons area that includes Chicago Drive up and down and the amphitheater and parking lots attached to it, that kind of thing. So ultimately, the council needs to answer the question about what's included. I would envision the social district would encompass the area behind Michigan Moonshine, but maybe not necessarily the commons area being out there, although it potentially could. So that was one of your questions, and we just need to figure that out and, and draw it according to what council's interested in. As far as, you know, the dates and times, again, council has to weigh in on it, but I don't know that we necessarily see upfront that this is a 365 day a year kind of a thing. We don't have the Ionia Avenue downtown Grand Rapids or the Eighth Avenue, Eighth Street, whatever it's in Holland, where you've got many licensed establishments and a lot of activity, hockey games going on. It seems to be a bigger, bigger bang for the buck for the businesses on those days that they've got downtown events going on and a big crowd in town. Other than that, I think generally the capacity's there to handle it on the patio, so to speak. But again, council needs to weigh in on this. There was some thought initially that maybe we'd have one commons area consistent for downtown events and a different one for other days of the year. And we don't think that's necessarily a very good idea. This comes with a requirement for putting signage out and enforcement from the police department. And you start getting too many complex rules, it gets pretty hard to do those things. Which sign applies to me on which day, it's kind of like odd even parking, you know? There's always difficulty complying with even something like that, so let alone which line affects me now. So most recently, the conversation has been to perhaps structure the social district activation around specific events. And I think as, you know, as was mentioned, keeping the district boundaries flexible for the future, you can always change these things, and if you decide to go bigger, you can go bigger whenever you decide that's appropriate. So that was our, our staff thinking on that. I don't think we looked specifically at the question, but I, I don't believe, I saw the law, and you've got a copy of it in your packet, that temporary licensees were permitted. It refers to the actual licensed establishments that are there, so I don't think it's possible for somebody to come in and be a temporary vendor. And that makes, create its own set of issues we want to avoid as well. As far as extending it to the west, right now, I think it goes to about, what we drew, again, just an approximation, goes to about Fayette. And that does get you, you know, the vicinity of the funeral home. I think we're trying to be conscious of the possibility for additional development downtown. And I know we'd all love to see, you know, additional restaurant choices if possible, that's been talked about off and on. So where you draw that line, again, comes back to council. The parking lot down Fayette to the south is also now owned by the DDA.
And I know that one's included.
Yeah, is there a benefit to having that included or not, you know? So I don't want you to get too hung up on the map that was in your packet, we just wanted to give you an example of, you know, the key areas that we think would, would, would probably suggest be included. And it also would be appropriate as far as integrating with the downtown events and being adjacent to our established liquor licensees. Was that it for those questions? I think it was.
Yeah, I think so.
Randy?
Well, just a couple of comments. I like the concept. I've been up to Rockford during COVID when they shut their Main Street down and had a social zone in, out in Muskegon and Lake Shore area. I had just a couple of questions or concerns, I think Teresa like kind of answered one of them already. And my, my first question was just kind of like the amphitheater, why there and the use and the concert series, you know, answered that. But I still go back to that area is used quite a bit also in the summer times for like kids-only events. We've had fashion shows, pet shows, talent shows. So I don't know how that works, but, you know, you answered a lot of that questions. I mean, if you're doing a strictly family event for kids who are eight to 12, you know, is it a big deal? I don't know, I guess that's for all of us to decide. Then I think to your concern, Josh, about going all the way down to Fayette Street, I think there's times during our festivals that there are antique cars all the way down and that whole street is used, so maybe this...
And the parking lot too, probably.
Yes, maybe this goes back to a timing issue when we want to have this zone enforced, because it's a, it's a, you raise a valid concern about the funeral home. And then my only other concern was if this was, you know, 120 days a year, year-round, Chicago Drive can be kind of a busy road to have people crossing back and forth, so maybe, I just raised that, maybe it's a, going to be event-specific or certain times of the year. I don't know, just things to think about and work through, but overall, I, I think it's a good concept.
That brings up another thought that I had, I guess, too, is it, because when we do those events with the car shows, the cars are parked on private property in parking lots. So would you have to get permission from the property owner to extend the district into that property for that event or, because it's supposed to be on public property, right?
Yeah. We talked, we talked a little bit about that, but...
We can be flexible.
You know, for the stage we're at, we didn't go all the way to the nth degree to define that stuff. But I know Teresa, in at least the last couple of Vintage Fests, I think the funeral home parking lot was even a, a stage venue associated with that.
It's filled with cars and there's a brand, and so I don't, like, it's not, I'm not completely clear on the rules, whether it could be part of it or not and whether Metis Kyperdigraft would want it to or not. If not, then Paul Inglis' point, like, then someone needs to be monitoring that section during an event, because people are just going to be walking. If the social district ends before you get to their parking lot, that would require manpower and signage, very clear signage, letting people know the social district is ending, you can't walk, which could be a potential hassle, but I think we could, you know, certainly we need to look into it more and have a conversation with Metis Kyperdigraft and see what they prefer. But I think Ken's point was if we limit this to event days and the Thursdays in the summer, at least for the initial year, to see what is the response, how is it working? They might be more open if it's legal to include their lot in that, as opposed to if it's just open 365 days a year, which seems a bit overkill for our town.
Yeah, and, and we spent quite a bit of time, Teresa mentioned, speaking with the chief. There's logistics here, you know, and you do have an obligation if you pursue this to demark the area and, you know, make it clear by signage, this is the end point, you know? And the map that we drew, it looks kind of like a spider. I mean, there's, there's little dead ends that reach out into space there, so signage, marking, pavements, whatever it might be, knowing that enforcement issues like this may come up, you know? What happens if somebody steps over the line and gets out of the district? We're hopeful to go to school on our sister cities out there who have made this work, but our approach has generally been to step into this a little carefully and to not overdo initially so that we can see how it works and identify problems as we go.
I think it'd be great if we could figure out how to layer it onto the footprint of whatever the event is, somehow, you know, to include private and public property if the private property owners are amenable to that and that's allowable. Because I can see how that would be confusing if the district is limited to public properties, but your event is extending into private properties and stuff. There's one boundary for this and a different boundary for that, that's going to be very difficult to enforce and very confusing for people, but.
Well, Ken, it sounds...
We've got what we need. Clearly, there's a consensus of council to keep working on this, and we'll make that a priority. Again, you know, the, the, the first event that, you know, we'd like to include if we could would be the, the first June event, the first family night, what do we call that?
Music, food and fun.
Music, food and fun. You know, whether we can do that by taking prompt action at the council and still get it through the, the state in time for that is a question mark, but at least we can do our part, you know, to keep it moving along, so. So we'll keep doing that. It, it, it sounds like, does anybody have a problem with this not being 365, you know, but more tied to the event dates? We'll, we'll get some, we need hours of operation as well, and, you know, I'm sure we're not going to take that too, too deep into the night. Our events don't, don't go, you know, till midnight or something, so I'm not sure the social district needs to as well. But those are the kind of things, there may be some blanks on a resolution you may have to fill in. But I think we've got general consensus then on, on doing it and on working with them, trying to get the map a little bit more precise and tying it to a, a specific set of event days. I think those are all the things that we need probably to get it going initially, and we'll be back as soon as we possibly can with more for the council to consider, hopefully up to and including the actual resolution that would be necessary.
Council, any other comments on, on this matter? Okay, now, we'll, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have a number of reports, the February reports for investments, Fire EMS and the Clean Water Plant. We have the minutes from a couple of February meetings, Park and Recreation Board and Library Board and the Tree Board, as well as a March Tree Board meeting. And we also have a, a proposed proclamation for National Arbor Day, which is April 29, and that is a requirement to maintain our status as a Tree City USA, is to have a pro, that proclamation. We also have on, on there, starting the second budget work session for Monday, April 18 at six o'clock at the Clean Water Plant, where we've met before. And we have a purchase order from the motor pool for a pickup plow, so for $6,200, from, is it a restock truck and equipment? So approval of the consent agenda because of that purchase would be in the best interest of the city. So is there a motion to approve that consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
So move.
Or, or anything anybody wants to talk about in particular? If not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Nordhut?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Merengah?
Yes.
And Merrimack?
Yes. Ken, city managers report.
Well, you can tell spring's coming because we pulled the engineer in today to talk about road projects, so we've got Tim Holfer from Moore &amp; Brew Jink here, and he and Charlie in particular have been working on a couple of projects. The first one falls in the area of water, where we've got a, a single project to replace Watermaine and Three Streets. And then we're going to keep those guys up here after that to talk about major street repaving as well. And we've got some council action associated with both those, so. Tim, Charlie, you guys want to go over the bids we took this week on the Watermaine project?
Chair, want to come up?
Sure, come on up.
Oh, yeah.
If Kara can do it, you can do it.
Good evening, everybody. Get a chance to stand in front of you very often, so it's kind of nice. Yeah, so I think the first one you mentioned was the Marine Harvest and 29th Street Watermaine project.
Yes.
So we took bids on that last Tuesday. We've received four bids. The engineer's estimate was $1,097,000 approximately, and Georgetown Construction was low with a bid of $1,067,000. We went through the bids, had some conversations with the contractor, and it looks like everything's good to go from that end. One kind of caveat, I'm not sure if you all have heard about our material shortages, but it's hitting the construction industry very bad right now. So the, the PVC Watermaine pipe that we're using on the project is about 12 to 16 weeks out from the time they order, and the valves and hydrants are four to six months. So the project won't be able to start right away, it'll probably be July, August-ish. So we did push the, the completion date back into November. Contractor believes he can get it done by then, assuming that he gets the order in and the suppliers stay on. I mean, it's a, it's, it's pretty fluid right now, so. But there is always a possibility that they could get, you know, find a little quantity and maybe do 29th Street or something like that, you know? But, but that's, that's where that one is at. We haven't had, obviously haven't had a pre, or, you know, pre-construction meeting, don't have anything set in stone yet, but July, August was what he was kind of thinking for start date on that one.
The, the actions that would be required would be to formally award the bid to the low bidder, Georgetown Construction, and the amount that Tim just gave us. And then we also asked council to authorize the project budget, which was also included as part of the material submitted by Moore &amp; Brew Jink. That includes, in addition to the bid amount, design engineering, soil borings, construction, testing and staking, inspection on the project, and project contingencies. So a separate motion to authorize that budget would be helpful as well.
Okay. Is there a motion to regarding the Harvest Avenue, Marine Street and 29th Street Watermaine Improvement Project to award the contract to the low bidder, Georgetown Construction, in the amount of $1,067,537.72? So, can I get a question then? Got a motion?
Support.
Support. And Randy, question?
We've talked about lead service lines before, and when you're, when I see Marine Street, I mean, that's quite an old street. When you go through and you put the Watermaine through... When you go through and you put the water main through, you'd be able to tell if there's any lead services there?
Sure, yes.
Will you just notify us or, I mean, we've talked about how to deal with that at some point in the future.
We looked into our records and we found we're going to find two or three. And what these, what the state says, if we find them, the city pays for a new brand new water line from the main all the way into the house. We have to do a real choice.
Lead or galvanized.
Is that contingency in the price?
Yeah, we have, I think we have maybe two figured into the price, just based on Charlie and I's conversation and Charlie looking at the records and thinking that, you know, it's a couple. And that's somewhat what that contingency, that 10% contingency is for too, if there are a number of them. But, but the, but the specification is, is in there and, you know, so the process is in the project on, you know, what the contractor's doing, how and.
I just know we've talked about it before as a city of how to get rid of these, so this is-
For sure.
This is a street wear.
Yeah, it's definitely a big, a big, a big deal, so.
Yep, that's good. Thank you.
Got motion and support? Any other comments or questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Nordhook?
Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes. Next action would be to approve the estimated budget in the amount of $1,335,000 for that same project. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved. Support.
Motion, support? Comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truce?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Nordhook?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
And Mayor Moss?
Yes.
Second progress project is the Major Street overlays.
Yeah, so Chicago Drive and Wilson Avenue resurfacing. So those are actually two separate projects and as we got a design process, MDOT allowed us to combine it into one single construction contract, which helped, you know, I'm, I'm pretty sure helped save a little bit on construction and certainly saves a little bit on construction inspection and administration. MDOT took bids on that on March 4th and there were three, three bidders, so the three big pavers in the area. Our estimate was $1,098,000, so pretty much the same, pretty close to the same estimate as the, the other project. Reith Riley Construction was low at $961,000. So MDOT actually awards that contract and they did award the contract to Reith Riley. They got all their paperwork in on March 18th. So we haven't had, we, we haven't held any pre-construction meetings or anything yet, but I have had a conversation with the contractor. He's talking about, we'll, we'll have that meeting in a couple of weeks, but he's talking about wanting to start Chicago Drive right out of the gate as the, as the paving plant's open and we get good weather. So he's thinking, again, not set in stone, but around the third or fourth week in April, starting that project and he's thinking it's going to be, that one's going to be about three or four weeks. There's no pipe work on it. It's, it's really just a one-layer mill and overlay with a little bit of curb work and drainage structure repairs. And then the Wilson Avenue, we instructed the, the bidders to wait until after school is out to do that one. So that one will probably take place in early to mid-June, he's thinking, probably right after school's out. And that one's probably a little shorter, might be a couple of weeks. But again, nothing set in stone yet. So traffic will be maintained, one lane in each direction on both, on both streets during construction. So yeah, that's, that was, I think, the, the high point of that project.
Okay. So, Ken, as I understand it, the only city action would be to approve the budgeted, the project budget, which includes $657,170.27 of our Major Street Fund?
Yep, with a remainder covered by the state through, it's actually federal funds passed through the state.
So is there a motion to approve that amount, $657,170.27 in the Major Street Fund for this project?
So.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any other comments, questions? Okay, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwall?
Yes.
Gelderlos?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Nordhook?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truce?
Yes.
And Mayor Moss?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. Let's see. Ken, what else do we have?
Nothing else from me tonight, Mr. Mayor, other than, and it's included on the agenda, is the request for council, when you're finished with council comments, to adjourn the meeting to a closed session for purposes of discussing pending litigation. And we've got three cases. They would be for considering pending litigation of Macy's, Hampton Inn and Suites and Marriott Spring, Spring Hill Suites.
Okay. So before we go to that motion, let's take council member comments. Randy?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Josh?
Yeah, just appreciate the opportunity to go to the MNL conference a couple of weeks ago. Ken was there, JR was there for part of it as well. And it was good to be back in person in Lansing with people. And it was pretty well attended, I think. They had some good sessions, a lot of talk about the ARPA funds and how communities are able to spend that and kind of what projects and ideas people have for that. So that was pretty exciting. There was also a lot of talk about social districts and some of the things with the green communities that have been discussed here before as well. Charging for the Future of Electrification, that's a session that I went to that was about electric vehicles and electric vehicle infrastructure and stuff, kind of the way of the future. And we've talked a little bit about that also. In fact, we have a couple of charging stations that are installed or will be installed downtown in our new parking lot there. So pretty interesting to, to learn more about that also. So it was a good conference. The League is actively working on our behalf, as well as all of the other local communities to advocate in Lansing for things that are going on. You know, they're still talking about the short-term rentals and they're still talking about lots of stuff with the budget and it looks like it's promising that we'll get an increase in our revenue sharing, at least for this year, from the legislature. It's been proposed, it hasn't been finalized yet, so that's always good news. But yeah, it was a good conference. Appreciate the opportunity to attend.
Justin?
All right. Last week, I went on a Clean Water Plant tour with my students in Wyoming. And the reason it connects is they talked about the fact that in their eration system, sometimes they have issues with microbe levels and that often Granville and Wyoming will have to share or come to each other's rescue. So that was kind of a cool lesson on city partnerships that I did not realize existed, the transfer of microbes between cities. So kind of cool. And another thing with Randy's comment on lead lines, that got me thinking about, as we're talking about ARPA and we continue to have these budget discussions and such, I'd really like to take a look at and have us discuss, setting aside some portion of ARPA for that purpose, for water infrastructure. I think that that's really an important topic for the future. We know there may be some Eagle mandates that come down the line here, not too distant, in the not-too-distant future. And so I just think it's good for us to be looking at that and that's one way that we can use that toward infrastructure in the future. So, thank you.
I just want to say thanks to Kara for coming tonight, for your presentation and not only the presentation, but your guidance and support to Granville and our efforts to have a clean, green community. Thanks. That's it. Paul?
Well, I like all that. Thank you for coming tonight. And yeah, we will work to continue to protect Buck Creek and, and water infrastructure is of course one of the major purposes for the infrastructure funding that we're getting, I think. So, but we did, we have talked though too about buffer zones for Buck Creek and other things like that. So anyway, moving on, the Rapid Board, which I serve on along with the mayor, is one of Granville's two representatives. Just want to let you know, we purchased property here in Granville for a new paratransit operations center, purchased a Meakoff trucking facility on Bush Drive, 3531, or we're, we're going to close on it in June anyway. We just, we signed an agreement, I guess I should be more exact. In any event, our staff was, Rapid staff was pretty pleased to, to find that property in a really nice location, close to the highway and, and it's a trucking facility, you know, big doorways and bays that obviously still needs some rehab, but it's, it's, it's well-suited to, for the, for its, for its intended purchase purpose. So I just thought I'd let you know about that coming. And the reason for that, by the way, is that premier or that our paratransit current operations facility is on leased land, which is the owner is selling it, so we have to move. Similar situation to the premier folks who are, who continue to come, you know? Does anybody have any thoughts on what we can do, if not to assist them, but to help maybe move them along in their process? I mean, I think that's maybe where you were going a little bit, Ken, and, and I don't know, maybe we need to sit down with them. I'd be willing to do that too. But, but they continue to bring up school facilities. Again, we heard it tonight, Jenison, Byron Center, those are school facilities. Last time they talked about an Alleghan facility, I looked it up, that's a school facility, you know? It's school systems build these things and municipalities don't.
Yeah, that really was kind of where I was going, is to make sure that there's different, they don't just look at one possible solution. And I think the first conversations back with the city were kind of, the first comments back were fix this, save this, make this go away. And it's really clear that the footprint of that facility is much, much larger than the city of Granville. That's my facility, you know? And so I'm in there two or three times a week and, you know, tennis speaks for itself. You can see the logos on the kid shirts. I was in there Friday and they had a big, must have been some sort of an OK meet or something and, you know, it was all over West Michigan, these probably seven, eight teams that were in there, you know? Grand Valley State University, that's their facility. They don't have an on-campus tennis facility. And I had the benefit of a couple of conversations where I could kind of reiterate that the footprint is larger than Granville being the obvious party to get involved in here. But I have had a couple of conversations. It wasn't until this past weekend that I had heard there was even a crack in the door with regard to potential abandonment of the facility, not for demolition and replacement with housing, but that maybe it might be possible to purchase that and continue it. But those were only general conversations with folks and a lot of the things that I think they're hoping to do, I don't have confirmation that they're able to do them yet. You know, we're not aware the facility's even purchasable.
Right.
Even if there were one avenue or another to create enough interest to, to have a purchase become possible. So I, I did have a conversation with the manager, manager of that facility and he let me know there was a scheduled meeting this weekend, which I suspect was the one we heard about tonight. And I mentioned I'd stop back in and see him next week or this week now to see where that conversation led. That, you know, was not necessarily about purchasing the property, but I think any little bit you get might help. So I, I, I think that maybe there's something we can do as far as encouraging them to, to look at investor purchase or member purchase or the 501(c)(3) they're doing. But I, I think they're doing, they're doing okay with regard to trying to be creative on ways to, to save their club. I didn't want to correct anybody tonight. Obviously, we do have a senior center in Granville. We do have a community place. We provide services. It's not that nothing's provided in Granville. We just don't have an indoor tennis facility, nor do any communities in West Michigan I'm aware of. So that does tend to be associated with universities, colleges and in some cases, high schools. So I'll, I'll keep my ear to the, to the wall on that one. And if there's something we can do to be supportive or we can be maybe part of a solution, if there's a way to do that, as opposed to being, you know, the, the rescuers, you know, solely, I think that makes more sense. I don't know what their membership breakdown is, how many members are actually residents of the city. There was a good-
I was wondering that, yeah, they said 500 members. It was the first time I heard a number quoted. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but then I wondered immediately how many of those, could even half of that be in the city of Granville? Probably not.
A lot of the folks here tonight were residents of the city and that's good to see because I think the first meeting I wasn't here for, but I think you had a lot of folks from outside the community at that meeting. So it, it seems like the solution's bigger than our, our city limits here.
Yes, it is.
And I'll, I'll do whatever I can to facilitate, you know?
Good.
Conversation and try to keep council posted, if that's where you hope to be, you know, so.
Thank you. I'm all set.
Chair?
Yeah, just appreciate looking at the, just like last meeting, the police awards. Now we've got the fire awards too. Congratulations to all those award winners and obviously for their service. Looking through here, there's a handful of folks that have 20 and 30 years of service, including yourself, Chief. So thank you for that. That's awesome. The Gazette, always some great nuggets to be pulled out of this. That's always fun to read. I believe, is Jana the one who pretty much does that? Yeah, that's fantastic as well. And obviously Teresa, wonderful kudos again to the adult Easter egg hunt this past weekend. While we didn't have the mayor hanging out of a helicopter dumping eggs on the middle school lawn, there were continued ways to always make this event new, fun and exciting. And just talking with some other residents that said, I didn't even know this existed. I had so much fun. And while I've been to every single one, it's never the same. I don't know how you do it. I mean, I feel like I want to Google to try to cheat so I can do better every year, but there's just no way to do that. She just continues to blow us away. So thank you for another great event. Looking forward to the next series of events. Art and Chocolate Walk, is that the next thing? So looking forward to that. So thank you for all you do.
Good. Paul, I'm glad that you mentioned the probable purchase of the property in Granville. And I don't remember the exact figures, but by purchasing that as opposed to purchasing open space and building a new building, it was millions of dollars in savings. Again, I don't remember exactly one, but a lot. So it's kind of a win-win, I think, for all the parties. So next thing is, is there a motion to adjourn to a closed session to discuss pending litigation commercial tax appeals for Macy's, Hampton Inn Suites and to the Marriott Spring Hill Hotel?
So moved.
Motion and support? Any discussion? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gelderlos?
Yes.
Meringa?
Yes.
Nordhook?